Okay, Mike, you want this?
Let me just remind you and remind the public, whoever's here, that this is the second workshop of our fiscal year 2020 workshops to put the fiscal year 2020 budget together. And in the first workshop, we worked through all of the various elements of revenue. And we came to the conclusion at that point that the anticipated revenue for the next year was fifty, in the general fund, was fifty-eight million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, basically fifty-nine million dollars rounded. That's the number that we have to go. And as I said at that workshop, just like at home when you're wrestling with your checkbook, the first thing you do is to make sure you know how much money you have before you start spending. So that's what we did in that first workshop. Now, the second workshop, and this is usually the one that's the longest and the most detailed, is the department budgets, because as you know, eighty-plus percent of our budget is people. So obviously, the people part of the budget is where the money is. The department directors have submitted their budgets. We've scrubbed those budgets. We've scrubbed them in the down direction a good bit. And now they're prepared, with that scrubbed budget, they're prepared one by one to talk to you about what's in their budget and why. And what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the mayor, is I'd like to start with the fire and police departments, because those two departments, in those two department budgets, are the majority of the increases over this fiscal year. Pretty much all the rest of the departments are in line with their 2019 budgets. The last thing I'll mention, and this affects every department, is that we have an unfunded deficiency this year that is a requirement, an expense requirement that came from external sources. Came from the state of Mississippi retirement system, employee retirement system. We have an unfunded problem, if you will. It amounts to about eight-hundred thousand dollars, because we now pay seventeen percent instead of fifteen percent employer contribution on employees' salaries. And that's a big load that came to us externally. In other words, it's a must-pay bill. So yeah, everybody in the state's got the problem. Every city on the coast here is wrestling with that problem of having this big unfunded deficiency and how to handle it. So when you see the department budgets and you see their personnel cost, remember that that two percent, that extra two percent is in there this year. And that's one of the reasons why the salary numbers are up. It's not because salary's up, it's because the burden is up. So with that, mayor, unless you have... So, so if, looking at that sheet, what I'd like to ask Chief John Miller to come up and talk you through the police department's fiscal year 2020 budget ask. And I think, chief, you can, why don't you come to the table?
All right, thank you. I just, I prepared something just to kind of make it a little easier to see where we're at, how we got there. A 2018-19 budget was seventeen million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. So the 2019, 2020 budget, we proposed eighteen million, five hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. So that's an increase of one million, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand and four hundred dollars. The reason for those increases, and I'll go through these quickly. We only asked for two new positions. They were both in dispatch. That's a total of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars for the two salaries benefits. The body worn camera system, it's a five-year plan, if we decide to go with the five-year plan. And I'll discuss that with you in a minute. It's seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. That's the body worn camera. Now, they've offered us a plan, but I'll come back to that if that's okay. And that's five years. You had the whole five-year amount, that's right. But I can break that down for you here shortly. Overtime not budgeted last year was seventy-four thousand. That was all the events that we had, that we had not budgeted for. So we added, anticipating we would probably have pretty close to those same events coming back. Maybe not the airshow, but I'm sure something else is going to pop up. But we went ahead and budgeted seventy-four thousand dollars more in overtime to cover those. Tuition increases, because we have that tuition benefit. We raised that to thirty thousand, raised it thirty thousand, because we were in the hole with that last year. We put in for a citizens academy, which is where we bring the citizens in and basically show them how the police department works and that. And that's something else that we can look at, if you have any questions on that. And then the state retirement, the FICA increased one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Workers' comp increased ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The uniforms increased by twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. CSI products and DNA lab testing accounts for twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollar increase. Natural gas increase went up, we had to increase five thousand dollars to cover that. Janitorial and cleaning increased a thousand and two hundred dollars. And then educational incentive pay. That's when their officers have been going to school and get their degree. And you know, we have an incentive pay for that. So that went up three thousand dollars. The capital budget in 2019 was nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and three dollars. The capital budget proposed this year is one million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So the capital, the capital budget itself increased by eight hundred and four thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. So since we had proposed things early on, we removed ten vehicles. So that means we removed about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the budget. And we removed the equipment for those vehicles, which was another three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Or the budget would have been six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars more. Now, the body worn cameras, we can reduce the budget another three hundred and... Another three hundred, about three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars if we decide to go with the five-year plan that they've offered us. They basically finance it for us for five years. There's really no charge to the finance. But there is, if we pay it all upfront, we do get an additional half-year of maintenance and storage. If we decide to pay it over five years, we would lose that. That's really the only benefit we would lose. If we decided to do that, the first payment would be three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we would make four more payments within the next five years for about a hundred thousand apiece. Ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars apiece is what they would be. If we do that, if we decide to go with that five-year plan, that would drop the capital budget in the police department to one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. And the biggest, the biggest issue in the capital naturally is vehicles. Year before last, we didn't buy any vehicles. And that's kind of why you see the increase in the vehicles this year. Last year, we bought about a dozen, I think we bought thirteen. And you're talking about cars that run constantly, seven days a week in a lot of cases. So I'll put together just a list here of the vehicles that we would be replacing. And you can see all of these. Some of them have over two hundred thousand, but all of them have at least a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand miles on them. So they're at end of life. They're starting to cost a good bit to keep them running. And we need some of those extra vehicles to be running at least well enough that we can use them around the city for when we bring other officers in for the large events that we have. We have to put them in something. These are over a hundred thousand. And I can probably give you another list of this many also that's over a hundred thousand. If we think that we can use them around the city, we will keep them and use them, like I said, to put officers that come from out of town in them, you know, for when we have the big events. If they really need to go, if they're just unsafe, and we've got quite a few that way, then we sell them at auction if we can't use the parts off of them for another vehicle. So I'm, I'll take any questions you have. And I know I ran through that quickly.
You mentioned in your overtime on this, in here it says thirty-something thousand. And you mentioned the number of seventy-something thousand for overtime. Where's it at? For overtime? Or maybe it was one subcategory, I don't know. Right there? Go down. A little further down, I think.
Well, the seventy-four thousand I'm talking about here is almost identical to what the overtime above what we had budgeted last year turned out to be.
I got distracted. Did you answer the question about the big sell-off every year for ones that are extra?
We do. We sell those. If there's anything that we feel like is going to cost us more than it's worth to try to keep it running, we sell it at auction.
So the vast majority of your old police cars, you said, had a lot of, rather, rather, rather...
Some of them are. Yeah, some of them are.
They're very, the lots, we bought most of them last year. We sold about seventy thousand dollars worth of cars last year.
Yep. And there'd be about another, that never is accounted here, but we will bring in about roughly between three and four hundred thousand dollars in reimbursements from the government and then old fines and tickets.
Yeah. But on this screen, it says in nineteen, you had thirty-seven thousand, eight sixty in overtime. And then the change is thirty-seven... All right, so you got, that's a subgroup?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got you. That's correct. You have to keep in mind, if there's an event, there is no section. Everybody works. See, yeah, right. Well, I know, I know that this number is very close, because we worked it out a couple of different times, a couple of different ways, to make sure that we were accurate in what we were saying. And we may not, we may not, you know, we may not spend seventy-four thousand dollars, you know. But then again, we could have a major hurricane and we would. So it's, it's just one of those, you have to play a gamble.
So what is your total overtime period? Would you have to pay overtime twenty last year?
Do you have that there? We're at ninety-five percent as of today. That's right.
We've got a couple of months, yeah.
We do. We have another big event. We have not come back and asked for this overtime. We thought we would just try to play it out and see how close we could get, you know. But I don't know that we're going to make it.
Question on this overtime, and that is, what's budgeted? Anything above what's budgeted comes out of the general fund?
That's right, all right. But it's got to come from somewhere.
Right. And the burn rate right now is about fifty thousand a month. But a lot of that was an event in May. That was probably spring break, considering the pain in May. That was about almost three times what it typically is. But at this rate, you may go, you figure, what, another seventy-five thousand between now and the rest of this fiscal year? And that'd be holding tight, and, which leads to my next question. So just bear with me for a moment. On, in any given month, how many sworn officers, cops on the beat, if you will, how many slots do you have that are empty? Because I'm thinking, some are on vacation, some are injured, some of them retired. But you have these empty positions. Any estimate on what you average among roughly one or two or three?
Well, if they're on sick, or if they're sick, or on light duty, that's still a position. They still get paid.
Right. What I'm getting at is, though, that's going to drive some of your overtime, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Especially in dispatch.
Either that, or you're short patrols in sectors.
That's right.
And so you have this balancing act here. How many folks retired this, how many officers retired?
I've lost count. We're down thirteen right now, which we've tested far. And we have people waiting to fill those positions. But we're down thirteen. And I had gotten another resignation letter this morning. So we'll be down fourteen by October.
All right. So the bad news is, we have fourteen vacancies. And we need fourteen trained professionals out there. And the worst news is, that means you're taking this guy who's still with us, and he's, I would assume, working overtime or working a double shift or something, which means you're paying him time and a half, or double time, whatever it is. And I guess my concern is, if we're only filling the vacancies that we have, and this would be true in the fire department as well, if we're only filling those vacancies we have with no flexibility by having, and I don't know how many, you need two or three additional officers. My point is, is it cost-effective to pay for those additional two or three to fill those vacancies when folks are out? Or are we better, I would assume we would be, or are we better just paying overtime to the officers on staff who are working longer hours? The fatigue issue?
Right. No, we would, we would benefit more from having more officers. We need to be somewhere around a hundred and forty-five policemen is where we need to be.
Where are we right now?
We're at... We're at a hundred and thirty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it takes, it's a lengthy...
Right. And that's the other thing. You just can't go hire an officer and he's on the streets tomorrow.
Nope. Can't do it. Throughout the department? Yeah, we have, there's fifty, there's fifty, yeah, there's fifty, fifty-three. We have a... There's fifty-four civilians. That puts us down two right now. We're lacking two.
So what, on average, do we have a cost per officer? Just talking about, but I'm thinking, what's a typical cost? So we could multiply it by twelve in order to have...
That's with benefits and all? Yeah.
All right. So let's just say round it off to sixty K each. So really, to have a hundred and forty-five officers, so that if folks are injured, retired, on vacation, you need about another dozen. Another dozen and sixty thousand would run you almost three-quarters of a million dollars. But if you did that, then you can cover for those folks, right?
In a perfect world, but it's not a perfect...
Overtime would go down, but I couldn't guarantee it, because then you're going to have the events, again, where everyone's going to work.
A lot of events, but also, I know that we're kind of sitting here talking about these things, and it's a public meeting. And I just, I would like to paint a picture as we go that I think we can do a better job, but also there's an additional cost for that job. And it's not that anybody's saying, I'm looking how we can spend more money. But when you take into account what we're spending now, just in overtime...
Right.
Then if maybe we can't get twelve officers, would we be better off getting four officers? You know? I mean, I understand there are trade-offs here. And for Joe Boni out there, I'm going to be asking the same kind of questions on the fire department.
Sure.
Exactly. So, I mean, but then you get into personnel policies. And I wouldn't mind looking at that personnel policy, because I don't know whether currently you can roll any vacation time you don't use. Can you accumulate it endlessly? And then, basically, when you decide to retire, you can cash some of that leave in, but the rest you can't. So I guess you, in the military, they call it terminal leave. And then I'm, I'm gone for three months, I'm still... Now, I can understand that. But I would imagine if you had a policy that says, if you have any additional, if you have any vacation leave that's unused, you've got to use it within a particular... Right. But still, there's a gap between...
Yeah, but we're videoed, so...
But there's a... But there's a gap in time from, I'm active and I retire, until we get a new man or new person in that spot. It's four weeks, six weeks, could be a couple of months, could be longer than that.
Eat the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so...
But in the meantime...
Eleven weeks in the academy, and then once they get out of the academy and they come back, they've got another five hundred and eighty hours before they're ever going to be cut loose on their own.
Right. So if you hire somebody off the streets, they're really not ready for, what, a year roughly? Nine months, ten months?
Yeah, at least, at least a year.
Okay. So, I mean, my point is, I guess, enforce efficiency, if that's what you want to call it. You always seem to be operating at less than a hundred percent. And maybe that's the nature of the beast.
Well, it's the nature of the beast where we're at, because of all the events and the details. You just take last month alone. We had officers that worked over a hundred details away from work. Either we're going to let them work those details, and whoever they're working for pays them. Or a lot of them, we're going to end up, like city buildings, where we're going to end up, if we're not passing that on to whoever's rented the facility, we're going to have to pay. They're going to have to have security there. So all those add up. And when you look at it, we have officers that literally could work, all of them could work seven days a week, just keeping up with what the demand is. The majority of them work a good five and a half or six days a week.
It just sounds like we need more officers, is what it sounds like.
We know that we do.
And about a dozen would be terrific.
Yes, sir.
You'd settle for ten, I bet.
Yeah, I would settle for whatever.
How many are coming up for retirement right now?
I got one letter, like I said...
But I mean, that can retire?
Oh, there's probably, we've had quite a few leave. There's probably another couple of dozen that could leave here within just the next few months. I don't know that they will, but they could.
My question is, we're talking about these thirteen people. How long have these thirteen people been gone? Using the sixty thousand, that's seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Have they been gone for the whole year?
No, no. They've been gone, some of them for about four months.
Budgeted for employees, how much is your budget if you spent?
There'd still be salaries from probably six or eight that might be significant.
Chief... I understand, I like, that's not changed. That's been going on forever. That don't change. None of that changed. The overtime don't change. It has to. My point is, if you're spending fifteen million dollars for employees, have you spent the fifteen million? Just using that number.
Well, that's what she was saying earlier. That's the reason we haven't had to come back and ask for some kind of increase in overtime, because we pull those salaries in order to make up those differences on that half dozen.
But you haven't spent the four hundred and seventy-two thousand in overtime yet.
We will by the end of the year.
By the end of the year. I'm just saying, right now, we're trying to set a budget. We're trying to look at what we have to do in the future. We've got to go, can only go by what y'all telling us. So how many employees you got, how much money this costs, how much overtime's going to be? I mean, do you have any other really events coming up? Big events in overtime? None? You probably have overtime. But I mean, that's part of the way it works. It's a police department, fire department, that's how it goes. I mean, that's not going to ever change. I don't care if you have twenty more employees, you're still going to have overtime.
Chief, so if I understand, you have a certain number of positions. You do your best to fill them. And currently, right now, that number can fluctuate, fluctuate depending on if somebody retires early, moves away, is terminated, whatever. So that number, I mean, if you could, you'd have all those thirteen positions filled.
Yeah, we are rarely, rarely do we have all our positions filled. As soon as we get them filled, somebody retires or leaves. You know, so we have thirteen people right now that have passed everything. They're standing by, waiting to come to work.
And sometimes you get enough notice to be able to fill it quickly, and other times, you know...
Well, we have to go through civil service. So unless we have a list already established, then there has to be a test. And we have to follow all the civil service. That always takes a couple of months, just to try to get those positions filled. So like this list right now, we started off with sixty people. And by the time we got through with both the tests, the physical agility test and the written test, and we got through with the background test, you know, we ended up with about eighteen. And then by the time we finished off with the interviews and all that, we had exactly thirteen people.
So my other question goes to capital. You mentioned the cars that you have to buy to replace. And if we went to a lease purchase or whatever that program is, it would save us, what was that number again you said would save us this fiscal year coming up?
It's not a lease purchase now. That was on the body cameras.
Body cameras.
But there is lease purchase programs for vehicles.
I know there is. I know there is. And how much would that save us?
About three hundred and... Yeah, three hundred and sixty-two thousand.
That would trim off the budget this year.
It would.
Okay. So... So based on the budget crunch that we're in, does anybody oppose saying, let's do that?
That's right. Every year, we're going to, it's always, until we can, never change, that's right.
Listen, we issue bonds. We issue bonds that commit future councils or whatever. But we've got to make a reasonable decision here. And based on our numbers, and we're at fifty-nine million, and we're still in a deficit right now as we go through this process, that would be a big chunk to get out of the way.
I myself would recommend it. There's nothing, really nothing for us... I myself would recommend it, there's nothing, really nothing for us to gain by spending a whole amount upfront, except six months of maintenance and storage, that's all you're gonna gain from it. We're, we're talking- Yeah, just on the, just on the body cameras and, and all that, that, yeah, cars, we're, we're gonna, we probably need to look at a lease program, and we had discussed that a couple of times before, and there's, there's always been some, uh, there's always been some that don't care for that. I don't know why. Right. Sure. That's a thing of the past, sir. Uh, money is not transported on the interstate like it was at one time. You know, there was a time where we would have six or seven hundred thousand dollars in drug forfeiture money, and that, that is a thing of the past.
Well, computerized, upgraded.
Yep, that's all, you're right, it's, it's all moved electronically, the majority.
That's right, upgraded, Dan.
Yeah, much, much more, and besides that, the laws have changed, much more difficult to, uh, to seize money now.
Going back to the personnel, I'm sorry, but I just wanna understand this, you said you'd like to be at one forty-five where you were, how many years ago that was?
Well, we were at, well, we were at one fifty-one before Katrina, we had actually a hundred and sixty-one positions, and we had a hundred and fifty-one filled, it was always ten open positions. And we have probably twice the call volume now, and we know we have a lot more, uh, events.
So, so you'd love to have a hundred and forty-five, but currently you have a hundred and thirty-one?
A hundred and thirty-two, I think it's a hundred and thirty-
Alright, a hundred and thirty-two, and how many of those are vacant right now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so you-
About to be fourteen.
Fourteen, so you have actually a hundred and eighteen officers to deploy.
That sounds right, yes, sir.
You'd like to have a hundred and forty-five, you have a hundred and thirty-one slots, but you actually only have a hundred and eighteen to deploy.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty-four-
Let me correct that, I've sworn it's a hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah, one thirty-four, not one eighteen. He said one just turned in a letter, that's where the other one come from. Yeah, the fifty-four, you said, uh, rugged employees, so you have a hundred, about a hundred and ninety-nine people?
Yes, sir, that sounds right. We have, uh-
Seem like, I thought it was last year was a hundred and seventy-something, we up twenty.
We have a hundred and thirty-four sworn, we have fifty-six civilians, and one part-time, one ninety-two. We asked for two new dispatchers.
I'm just wondering, I mean, I didn't, never seen it, remember it being a hundred and ninety-something people before. Seems like both that, uh, five, and, uh, police was around a hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy-eight, hundred and seventy-nine, that's a big difference. The other question I would ask, if these thirteen people retired, they didn't retire, no fifty-six thousand, so how much money have you saved bringing them new people? They retired at seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand, so when you hire somebody in, they're hiring then twenty thousand cheaper than the people that retired, correct?
Yeah, that, that I had not figured, but you're right, there, there would be a savings. I don't know, I don't know if you've gotten that or not, Jody.
Well, not only that, but there are built-in promotions, so some of that costs, some of that saves, it's offset with that cost.
The other thing happens every year too, the promotions happen every year, people leave every year. He probably, next year another lose seven, eight more people, that's gonna constantly happen. So you can't keep going back to them saying things, that's a yearly thing, happens all the time. People sick, people die, people quit, people retire, and you constantly hire new people, so the prices is always fluctuating, those prices. Back to this three sixty-two for five years, you could pay that for five years, there's no interest or nothing?
No, there's a, that, that we would pay, uh, we would pay three sixty-two, uh, two fifty the first year, and then we'd pay ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen for four consecutive years, there's no interest. The only thing we would lose, uh, again, would be six months of maintenance and, and, uh, storage.
So the million eight is just costing you million eight over a five-year period?
Yeah, the total, the total is, uh, seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars, and I refigured that this morning, it's a three thousand dollar difference somewhere, I haven't figured out where that's at yet, but-
But you'd pay three sixty-two five times?
We'd pay three sixty-two one time. Then ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen, the next four payments.
Oh, so, okay. I wasn't thinking of it, so that's a big difference, that's a big difference, eh?
Yeah, the only other question we touched on was, please answer the, the, is that something you're looking at? Well, I, I can put that together, I think, I think, I don't think it'd be that difficult to put that together, and- Yes, sir. Cars and equipment, you know, you have to think about the equipment too, which comes out to be almost as much as the car. Right. And we're, we're going through a company now that- You're gonna put about another eighteen, twenty, twenty-two thousand in it. Some of it, we, most of it, we try to reuse if we can, some of it does have a, an end-of-life date. Currently, we're using a, a company, a Mississippi company that outfits everything for us, and we actually get the car at a little bit reduced price, and things, the things that they can put in, there's a few things they can't put in there, and we have to go in and add those. Yes, sir.
Chief, you said your budget increased this year, it's how much?
Uh, it increased, uh, million one sixty-seven, million one sixty-seven, four hundred.
Roughly one point two million, okay, so a recap from a week ago, we're looking at revenue, and the revenue is- flat? Literally, almost exactly what it was last year, is what we anticipate, right? That's okay, the point I'm trying to make is, our revenue's flat, but I think, looking through this, your budget's increased, a couple of other budgets are gonna increase, some may decrease a tad, but the, the point is, we're not looking at any more revenue, and in past years, we've always seen, we've always managed to approve a deficit budget, and we scrimp and save and just get by, and we work out, the administration works its magic, but then there are also these, I'll call them a hidden cost, if you will, we, we're down manpower, we have a hundred and eighteen folks. We used to have a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and sixty prior to Katrina, almost fifteen years ago. We've got, uh, as many people almost as we're, we're living, and we, we certainly have a lot more calls to the casinos, just in tracking that. We've got additional costs, I just worry about that, that's all, and next we'll, we'll list it at fire chief.
Our, our budget at one time was, uh, was much more than it is now. I mean, this, I know it's increased this year, but the budget has, has, has really gotten, when the first year I took over, it was almost twenty-one million. If that means anything.
Well, you know, we, you and I kicked around about the ending, and sort of, when you talk about deficit spending, you know, if we do well, like we've done the last couple of years- Yeah, you'll, you'll stretch, you'll stretch the revenue to cover the expenses, you hold the expenses down, I mean, that, that's it. Uh, my point is, though, that the, the revenue pie is really not getting any bigger. It's pretty much, uh, static over the past several years. My guess is next year, if it's been fifty-nine million for the last several years, and so, unless something significant happens, and there are some things in the work, but I bet they won't come on the tax rolls for a couple of years, that being the case, we gotta grow the pie, if not, the cost of everything else is going up, whatever inflation is, even if it's one percent a year, and it's more than that. I mean, there's a, you know, there's a, there's a cost to that as well. Anyway, I'm done pontificating.
So I just wanted to say, every year we have the same conversations, every year. And every year you ask the same questions about overtime, how many employees you have, how many, our employees are you down? And every year we cut the budget ten to fifteen percent each department. So that's exactly why you're gonna see every department coming up wanting more money, because eventually it's gonna give. And I think we're gonna see ourselves in a heck of a trouble here in a couple of years, because like he said, he's down thirteen, fourteen employees, and another dozen could just quit on us just like that, just because they want to. And we're gonna see ourselves in trouble in each department, we gotta have a plan, we gotta do something now, 'cause every year we're like, "Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll deal with it next year." So, we're about to get in some trouble, that's it.
I want everybody to hear that, so, that, so that million we're gonna add to John, is that million we saved last year? Joe, I got no money left for you, brother.
Should've gone first, Joe. Right, and there's no other, absolutely. I think we're ready to go far.
Yeah. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank all y'all. Hey, Joe, sit here, this seat's warm.
It's on fire. Just for your information, John, we're always in the red, anyway.
Well, this is a very unique year for the fire department, and as you know, we're, we're, we're gonna have two new fire stations.
How many bodies is that, nine? Does it take nine or ten, or eight or nine people for the, for the station?
For station ten, nine, nine, nine persons.
And seven?
Station seven, uh, we have the personnel already.
So that's not a change, so that's kind of a transfer, and so that's a good thing, that's good.
So, in, um, fiscal year nineteen, our budget was, uh, fourteen point eight million roughly. Uh, this year, it's up sixteen point two million, um, roughly. And I think the, uh, the two million is, a lot of it is the salaries, uh, the nine personnel that we're, we're asking for, for the, for the station ten. Um, one, I guess caveat to that is the, the firefighter grant that we have, uh, out there, uh, for the first two years, that will pay seventy-five percent of these employees' salaries, and, uh, the last year it'll flip-flop, and I think they pay like thirty-five percent or twenty-five percent, so-
Chief, is that factored into these numbers or not, or is this straight line across?
Only, they, are they? Right. Is in the, is in the, right, right, so, so that's, that's figured in there. Um, other than, other than, and, and that's pretty much it for the salaries, other than that, our salaries are, our salaries are pretty much flat, uh, what they were last year. Um, currently, uh, we have, uh, a hundred and fifty line firefighters, we have twelve openings. A hundred and fifty, uh, line firefighters, we have twelve openings. Um, it, it, and, and I, I'll tell you, I'll tell you all this because it takes, uh, forty-three firefighters to man a ship. That's what we are required by NFPA seventeen-ten, uh, the National Fire Protection Association. Uh, by their standards, and that's a national standard, we're required, um, to have forty-three people every day to man the trucks, uh-
And pardon me, I'm sorry, I've just gotta get these labor issues done, so the, station number ten on the labor mic, and chief, is it starting month one in the budget? Because when is it gonna be, a station ten gonna be opened?
Station ten, right.
And is that when the station is expected to open, October as well?
The station is expected at this point to be completed August the eighth. Uh, we have a forced hire program, if we move into that station on August eighth, which we will not.
Okay.
Uh, it'll be closer to October before we can get into that station.
Okay.
But if we are forced, if we are forced to go into that station, we have a forced hire, uh, list, where we force hire our current personnel, uh, to man that station until we get these new personnel trained on, online. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, and, and, and just going down our, our list here, uh, you know, not a lot, our longevity went down because we lost, uh, a number of senior firefighters, and every time we do that, longevity goes down. Um, and there were just a couple of, uh, of, of cuts, really, really good cuts, that I wanna explain. Under uniforms, uh, we asked for, uh, let's see, two hundred and one thousand increase, one, uh, dollars an increase. Um, and that was due to, you know, when I, when I came here, uh, earlier in the year and talked to you about the cancer presumptive, uh, legislation, and what the fire department was doing, and the need for a second set of turnout gear for our firefighters. This, this reflects, this, this increase reflects that request of one-third of our department to be, to buy turnout gear for one-third of our fire department. Um, we, we didn't wanna spring it on the city or on ourselves, uh, to buy all the, the turnout gear in one year, so we broke it into three years, uh, so one-third of this, uh, would, would, would be that, would, is the reason that incre, we requested that increase, uh, to buy one set, a second set of turnout gear for one-third of, of the department, but also to buy new turnout gear for the current openings we have, where we're planning to hire this personnel, and we have to buy new turnout gear for those personnel. So that was the reason for the increase, uh, in that.
Chief, is there a program similar to the body cam equipment, or for turnout gear, or not?
No, sir.
Okay.
It is.
It is.
These are regular shifts, so that's not really overtime.
Right, right, right.
Could you, um, I'm.
Well, what, what we call it is, it's scheduled overtime. In other words, you know, if you work your full schedule, that you're gonna get that, uh, in the overtime. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right, but let me, let me point out, that's, I think you budgeted four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand for overtime, you're at four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand right now, you average fifty-thousand a month, roughly, you still have three more months to go. Uh, yeah, but who's counting? But, but let me, let me rattle off some, uh, previous fiscal years. In two thousand seventeen, uh, you were twenty-three percent over budget, Chief. Twenty-sixteen, thirty percent, uh, twenty percent over fifteen, twenty-six percent over fourteen. In thirteen, you nailed it, and, and fiscal year twelve, you're twenty-eight percent over. And that's not on you, because, I mean, we have a history, basically, of underfunding you by about a quarter.
Right.
Every year. So, uh, I mean, we, we, again, it's, it's similar to the police department, you've got twelve vacancies right now. Do you have forty-three men per shift right now? Are you meeting that standard?
We, we are.
And does it involve paying any additional unbudgeted overtime to do that? Of course it does, 'cause you have a couple of, a dozen vacancies. So it's the same situation. I, I would hope that some point would be in a fiscal situation where, how many firefighters in a perfect world? Chief, uh, Chief Miller wanted a hundred and forty-five, great if you can get a hundred and fifty-one, uh, sworn officers, how many firefighters?
I would love to have two-hundred if I could, but.
Well, you can't.
And, and, no, you're right, but, and, and looking at, when I was, uh, reviewing the NFPA guidelines, um, NFPA is requiring that we have forty-three firefighters on the scene of a first alarm assignment to a high-rise fire. That's the, that's our whole shift, that's a whole shift on the department. So that's, we'll never get to that point.
Right.
Uh, we understand that. But, you know, the, the, the problem is, is, is not just the number of personnel we have, but, and I think you touched on it, the leave. Um, you know, we, we have four guaranteed vacations a day that we have to give, because these guys have to schedule their, their, their vacations. In other words, we have too many people to be able to, you know, to just say, oh, take off when you want.
Right.
They're all scheduled, so, so we, we're guaranteed, we have four people on leave every day. We have, um, you know, uh, workers comp, we have F and L A.
That's just the way, that's just the way the numbers work out. These guys go to fight fires, they, they get injured, uh, and, and things like that. But additionally, you've got a number of other calls, 'cause you roll a lot of trucks.
Right. Uh. And, and, and that's, that's one thing that, 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 where we are unique. I cannot roll a truck out of that station unless there are three men on that truck.
Right. If we had a different kind of truck, you know, I know, two-hundred medical calls for service pretty much every week, don't you?
At least. Sure, and, and we are working in that direction right now. We, we have two units that we run, if we have the manpower, we can run on medical calls. It cuts down on them engines having to run. Uh, but, but there again, it's the training, you know, and the manpower. Because like I say, if I, if I do these trucks, I still have to have three people on that pumper or that ladder truck when it rolls out of that station for a call.
So if you're, so if you're, uh, minus four, four firefighters every day, just due to vacation?
Right.
Seems to me like it'd be great to have just four more firefighters in addition to what you have now. That would help on some of the overtime costs.
I'll take two, I'll take one, and, you know.
I understand.
I'll take whatever I can get.
Well, I'm thinking, if, I'm thinking if we're, if we're paying, uh, about six-hundred-thousand a year, four officers would cost you with benefits, I don't know, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand a year, maybe we're better off, if that would knock down the overtime, maybe we're better off looking at hiring three or four more firefighters, which is, again, it's kinda like the, the same situation with.
Well, it's, and it's, and I tell my guys all the time, you know, it's hard to justify that we need to hire people and let people off. And it is hard to understand that, but when you, when you see the, the sheer number of hours these guys work, because we have to have these people on duty, uh, it, it gets, it's, they need the time off, they need to get that down.
Well, I mean, Chief, how many folks would come to work for you if they were guaranteed no vacation?
Yeah, you're right.
There you go.
Your question on the, on the safer grant, you said that's over three years, and I'm thinking your budget tech may know.
[laughing]
She's, she's gonna remain off camera. But you said the first year, the safer grant for these new firefighters pays seventy-five percent?
Yes.
And then the second year?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, and the third year, it's twenty-five percent? And then after that, we, we assume the entire cost, so that's, okay.
Or reapply, right, if you have.
No, we can't use the same, we can't, we can't reapply for a grant to get the same.
Right.
The, uh, the other thing, uh, that comes to mind, I know we had a discussion, I think, last year at this time, about fire trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so these fire trucks have to, I can't remember the terminology, forgive me, but pretty much you look at every twenty years, you, you, the plan is, you get another fire, new fire truck, one rolls out of service, and one rolls, a new one rolls into service.
Right.
And you had mentioned that after Katrina, there were a number of trucks that were bought, and their twenty years are gonna be up, you know, fifteen, I say twenty, it's fifteen years.
We have five trucks currently that we're gonna have to replace in the next year, year and a half. Um, and, and I, just real briefly, I, you know, we're talking about replacing trucks, and I need to put this into context, um, you know, we're, we're trying to get our rating up, we're doing everything we can to get our rating up. And this is from the Mississippi State Rating Bureau, and it, and it applies to apparatus lifespan and replacement, and just, just a couple of things, uh, briefly. Uh, Mississippi, Mississippi State Rating Bureau highly recommends that each jur, jurisdiction establish a long-range replacement policy for emergency equipment. Based on all factors involved, Mississippi State Rating Bureau has long suggested that communities consider the lifespan of first response engines as fifteen years on commercial chassis and twenty years on custom chassis. Experience dictates that fire app department pumpers with age are not the complete reliable firefighting machines they were during their earlier years. Consequently, pumpers with age beyond those outlined previously may receive partial grading. So anytime we go below the twenty years, and we get, our, all of our apparatus are custom trucks, custom, uh, pumpers, so we, we, we can go the full twenty years. But the problem also lies in, in, in it, I guess it reverberates, because we have spare units that we use in the place of, of the frontline trucks that we currently, you know, have on, online. And in, in Mississippi's vehicles, um, um, I guess you would call it, uh, dictionary or, or, or the definition, these trucks are over twenty-five years old, they're antiques. And, and so we, we have to get them replaced, we have to replace these, these trucks, um, that, I have three. One, I, I'm, I actually have one that will be going in place, it's twenty-five years old, it'll be going in, in Station Ten. The, the ladder truck is the newest one, it's two years old, yes.
What does a new truck cost, roughly?
A new pumper is right under, uh, a half a million dollar, right under five-hundred-thousand dollars.
So, when we last, uh, you know, we look at, uh, thirty dollars for Mississippi, uh, for the, uh, the trucks.
Yes. That's right, um. Yeah. Sure, sure, we, we currently have, we have a, a need right now for two trucks. We're, we're running two spares, and when Ten opens, we'll be running two spares, uh, as frontline engines, and we need to get them replaced as soon as possible. If we would order these trucks today, it would be a year before we can get them in here.
So you, so you need five, the next?
[laughing]
You, you need, uh, so you need five, and then? Right.
So, here's my question, Matt, it's in the budget, is it prorated for half the year with the timing of them getting here in a year?
You, you don't start paying on them until we receive them.
But you said it was in your budget.
You're right, so it's, it's, you're, you're looking at at least six months. Hmm? None, in Mississippi. Absolutely, we should.
Yeah, but it's not like so much a month, so it's all.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, you, you pay on the front end or the back end with this plan? I'm telling you, if, if you pay on the front end, you're, you're cutting out the cancer that these guys are gonna have to go through, and these employees, you know, you're gonna pay a little more on the front end, but it's gonna pay dividends on the back end, you know? Yes, sir.
So to, so to be clear, there are two trucks that we're gonna pay for over a five-year period in this budget.
Seven-year period. Or five, however you choose to pay for it. I think this, these, uh, these numbers reflect a seven-year payment. Three, we have three pumpers that'll be twenty years old next year that gotta be replaced, so. Then we're fine for a little while, for about five years. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think what Paul wants to know, how much money are we actually talking about? If you have any new trucks?
I get an, I, I've got an idea.
About a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
This year?
Is what we're asking, is what we, we, if we do a lease purchase program to buy two trucks, yes.
And, and one sixty-one is how many years?
I think it's seven years, yes.
Seven years.
Okay, so, uh.
One truck.
Two trucks.
Two trucks.
Yes, sir.
All right, then.
Yes, we was five hundred thousand, you're not talking, what's that, seven, that's a million?
There are also, uh, cost of train. There's new firefighters and everything, and we were anticipating those costs will be lower than what they typically are, because this new station, Station Seven, is, is gonna also be a training facility, and we may realize some revenue, maybe from.
We will, we will see a, a sharp decrease in, in our training at the State Fire Academy. We will now be able to provide that service here.
Will we provide that, excuse me, will we provide that for other fire stations here along the coast?
Other departments, they will, it, we will, we do. When we, when we have a, a class, um, we, we can handle, you can handle only so, I think it's twenty-one is the maximum you can have in a class. If we have a class, and say we have fifteen people or twelve people that go through this class, we offer it to surrounding departments, and they pay the difference to have their people. We don't make any money, but we don't pay any money.
Okay, so it'll be a wash, basically, you think?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I wanna go to a one, my, my goal is a one. We're, and we're on the track for a one. We're a three, we're a three right now, yes. And, and, and to give, and to, and to let you know, next year, we're up for a rating, we're gonna be rated next year, so, so, we're gonna, we don't have to have these pumpers in place, but if we can show where they've been ordered, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, you know, a credit for. Same with these. Uh, you're, you're looking at about nine, nine to twelve months? Uh, it's just depending on what the, you know, what their, uh, backlog is.
Chief, when, when is Ten gonna be open, or scheduled to?
Ten is scheduled right now for August eighth. That's, that's perfect world, I don't see that happening, but it's, it's getting close.
And when is Seven scheduled to open?
Seven is scheduled for November, right now, I think November the twentieth.
Right, so the, uh, firefighters that are going into Ten will be trained at the Academy in Jackson?
Yes.
And then are there any other firefighters that will be trained once Seven gets open in this fiscal year?
Well, this, yeah, and this is, this is what me and Mike were actually talking, ironically talking about this morning, I, I've got twenty, twenty openings, and I've only got sixteen people on, on the list. If I hired every one of them sixteen people, I've still got a number of people that I need to, to fill positions with, so.
Okay.
This class, this class will be the last one that probably goes to the Fire Academy to be trained.
Okay, and has that been adjusted, the budget's been adjusted, knowing that we will be doing some training here in this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's been adjusted, okay.
So if you keep in score out there in the audience or at home, uh, the, the fire department budget, it, it will see an increase of one-point-two million this year, is that accurate?
Well, uh, how'd you get it?
One-point-four.
One-point-four?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that change, thank you.
Well, at one-point-four, everything's in the top two, two, top two items. Uh, the, the, I wanted the thirty-five percent, so much increase, the first one.
And, and under what?
It's been a five-hundred-something thousand on the million-dollar deal. Right. And then what is the nine-hundred thousand for the, the second one?
Nine-hundred thousand is your operations where your employees are definitely, for the slowest, uh, cars, uh, safer, and, and.
So that's all new employees, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, two percent, so when you're still up there, ten percent increase, you're talking about eight percent increase. I, you already said to take two percent off all of them, so we have to do that. We have, we don't have any choice, you have to do that. So I've been looking at that, so I mean, that's, but I'm just saying, those two, the increase is on the top two things. That's, that's what I made for, and that's what the increase is, pretty much, other two are nothing. Plus, that's, that's what we, that's what we do, I mean, that's what the city is. City has nothing but personnel, we supply services to the taxpayers.
And, 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 and you, you have to, like, like Mike said earlier, you have to understand that we have two new stations coming online, and not just the personnel, but the, the gas, electricity, everything to run them stations is, is going up, uh, as well. Uh, supplies, everything just goes up because of these, the addition of two new stations.
Uh, two new fire stations, good for us, I mean, it's just costs money.
That's right, that's right.
The cost of money.
It's, it's the cost of the game, you know? That's right.
That's, that's what you collect Saxman's money for. So what?
One other, one other area I wanted to, I wanted to, to bring to your attention is the other professional services and, 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 uh, I understand that, that the reason, it's a good place to, to cut costs, but, but what you have to understand is, this was, this money, we, we asked for this money to, to, to allow us to, to have a grant person in the fire department. We currently are managing one-point-eight million dollars in grants, and, and as well as millions in the last three years that we were able to get from, uh, Michelle Crowley, who used to work here at this, for the department, she, she's since retired. Um, we, we thought of, instead of hiring, asking the city to hire us a grant writer, we, we wanted to contract this, um, and we asked for sixteen thousand to be able to contract her for a year, um, to assist us in managing these grants, because we currently don't have anyone available in the department that knows how to, how to write or manage these grants the way she's, she's done. Uh, she writes grants all around the country now, since she's retired, that's what she does for a living, and she's willing to give it to us for a, a really good price. But my thing is, until I can get, and I, I have identified a person in our department, but she needs more time with this, and, and, and so I was asking for at least one, one year for her to be able to work with Michelle on a part-time basis as a contract employee, so that she can get this person trained to the point where we can manage it ourselves.
That's a reasonable.
Well, it is, and, and I, and I know it, it's an easy place to cut the funds, but we have a lot of money tied up in grants right now, and we have, we wanna get more grants, and we're eligible for more grants, but we have to, my concern is, we have to be able to maintain the one-point-eight million dollars in grants that we are currently, uh, using.
So what are you asking for, Chief?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, and under other professional services.
Well, that, that makes sense to me, I don't mind us doing that.
Well, and, 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 and the way we reason that is, when she retired, instead of filling her position, um, we put the, um, emerg, emergency management under fire training, which was part of her position, and then we figured that we would contract somebody for the other part of this, the funds that, her salary, um, out of that. we put the, um, emerg- emergency management under fire training, which was part of her position, and then we figured that we would contract somebody for the other part of this, the funds that, her salary, um, out of that as well, so. Right. Right.
So, so Michelle would do the grant writing, good deal, sixteen thousand bucks it would, was what it would cost to get her.
Right.
Pull in more grants, manage at, what is it, did you say one point?
Right now it's one point eight million, but
Right.
by the end of the year it could go up dramatically, you know, and, um, I, I, I don't know if, if John, I'm sure John knows what I'm talking about when we talk about upgrading our radio systems, this, this is, this is coming up to a P twenty-five. Um, we're looking at two hundred, about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars just for the fire department to be able to upgrade, um, and we actually have, have a grant in right now, we're hoping to be able to get that. Thank goodness, I think the federal government backed off a little bit on, on the, the date, but it's coming, yes. Yes, we are, we are, current, the fire department currently is on first net.
But that's everybody's gonna be able to talk to each other or something, right, is our comp, so could we, could we add sixteen thousand into that budget?
Believe, quit adding money to something, just, Jesus.
Jesus can't be here today, George.
Well, and, 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 and I, I don't, you know, other than that, I don't think there's really any, everything else is pretty much the same.
Let me ask you another question, uh, the state gives you this pretty lot to make you do all the stuff, does the state help you do anything? Does it grant from the state, could you get a fire truck from the state?
Well, you know, the state has, the state has a, 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 a fire truck acquisition program, but it's only eligible to, to, uh, volunteer departments, we're not eligible for it. And, and that's, that's a bad thing with all the state programs. Biloxi and Jackson are the highest departments in, in the state and, and Gulfport, so we're the last to receive any funds. Yeah, yeah, they're, they're gonna give it to the...
A couple of years ago, when you got the new truck, was there some kind of grant involved in that?
CDBG got us, uh, got us a couple of trucks on grants, uh, and, and that's a good way to get a, a, a truck, uh, is CDBG money.
Was any money available in the CDBG?
But there was not, there hasn't been. And I will tell you, you know, in anticipation of this truck, we put a apparatus committee together, that's been working for the last year, and we have designed a truck that's, that's not, it's not, it doesn't have all the chrome and all this, the bells and whistles, it's a work truck. It's a lot cheaper and, and it's gonna do the work that, that we needed to do.
And what'd that truck cost?
It's about four hundred and, four hundred and eighty something thousand.
Around the five, five hundred thousand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. Um, I know that a lot of times the fire trucks are the first to arrive on a scene or whatever, and I'm gonna eat it. And, um, I know that they're not protected, firearms, so what can we do to have at least one person on every truck to be armed?
Um, I'm not sure that, that we are in a position to harm our people, we're, I don't think we, we wanna go there yet. I think we rely heavily on the police department to assist us with that. If there is an incident where, uh, we feel firearms are involved or our people are in danger, we're gonna sit back and wait for the police department to come in and clear the scene before we move in. However, um, ballistic vests are, uh, coming, uh, for the fire department, and they're not cheap. Uh, it's just another, another issue that we have to face nowadays. Uh, firemen are, are getting shot and killed by people every day, and, uh, but we have taken a passive stance. What we, what we do is when we go to a scene, and even if it's a domestic dispute, we're gonna wait till the police department clear the scene and tell us we can come in. Um, that protects our people. Now, when their people get hurt, then, then that's when the issue comes in, us being able to get in to help their people, um, so.
You do a lot of medical calls, did y'all have a person?
Yeah, seventy percent of our calls.
Medical call, and y'all probably save a lot of people, you get there way before ambulance or anybody else.
Right.
Right, and I mean, they're there in a heartbeat and they probably save a lot of people alive.
Well, we, we average a three to four minute response time, it's, it stands to reason we're gonna be able to do it. Two to three ambulances in the city at one time as opposed to nine engines in the city, you know?
I mean, that's the difference where, to me, the state with these ratings, we should be higher.
Yeah.
What is the highest we can get?
One.
Where we at now?
Three. And I fully intend to go to a two and hopefully a one in this next rating, yes, sir.
And that saves what, how much money?
It's, it's, I don't know what, 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 what it is from a three to a one, but it's, it's mainly on the commercial side. When you have commercial businesses wanting to come in and open up in here, it's, it's a big savings.
So that landmass to the west, there are one?
Yeah. No, there, 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 yeah, they are, they are one.
We need to be one.
And I would argue that myself.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to wake up anybody.
Are you code enforcement?
I could be.
I, I do have two questions. Does their budget reflect the position that we talked about that got omitted? They don't have that in there, okay? Also, I noticed in, uh, museums, there was no increase to PERS in there under that sheet, so is that? In, in, uh, PERS, uh, all the other departments, uh, had the increase in there, but, uh, museums did not.
I guess he can't retire.
There, well, there's four employees in there, so. Okay, um, we have, uh, in code enforcement, we have thirty full-time employees, one part-time employee, that's one up from last year, which Mike mentioned. Uh, Frederick was transferred over there to take care of short-term rental, we have him up and going now. We did lose Jerry Rose last year, uh, we promoted, uh, Jeff Toronto, the residential inspector, up to the commercial position, and we refilled the residential position, position with a guy named Don Sly. We have seventeen vehicles, uh, one of which is, uh, the one that's used by Main Street, the van. Uh, Bill and I are the only two, Bill Raymond and I are the only two employees that take a vehicle home, the rest of them are parked over there at night, except for the one that K parts at Main Street. Um, most of the vehicles that we have were bought by MDA back after Hurricane Katrina, and the, the average mileage on them is a hundred and ten thousand. Um, we have replaced a couple in the last two years, one, one each, each year. Of our employees, uh, almost no overtime, the only time that we ever have overtime, uh, occurs at the Civic Center, when they have special events over there, and sometimes it causes them to run over. Aside from that, there's essentially no overtime in our department. Uh, we are mostly service-oriented, uh, where we don't require a lot of heavy equipment or anything like that, we just need to replace a vehicle every once in a while or replace some office, office equipment. Uh, the buildings that we take care of out of our budget is the Community Development Building, the Visitor Center, the Civic Center, the Old Brick House and the Lighthouse, um, of which the, the Visitor Center is probably the most costly, because, uh, we have to take care of maintenance, landscaping, the video equipment over there, and, uh, almost always every year the, uh, Hadian Air equipment goes out, so we wind up having to pay to, to repair that. Uh, if you take our total budget and you remove the professional services, which is where we pay the, the temps for the Visitor Center, uh, and the money for Back Bay Mission, and you take out the electrical bill for all of those buildings, the tree cutting and the land clearance, it leaves us about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to get us through the year for everything else, so. Um, that's kind of my budget, I can tell you some other things. The, uh, we have a number of projects that are, we expect a permit before this year's over. Uh, our sales tax nu- sales tax numbers are up, our construction valuations are up thirteen million, and, uh, our, uh, fees are up. We, last year we averaged, uh, about twenty-seven thousand five hundred a month in, uh, permit fees, and this year we're averaging, uh, thirty-two thousand five hundred in permit fees. Uh, the short-term rental licenses have gone up, so, uh, they've gone up from twenty-five each to a hundred each, and we've gotten a total of two hundred and eighty applications, we've processed, uh, two thirty. And so we'll have some others that'll be, be coming online, so. That's essentially it, we have our, our jobs and office supplies and that kind of thing, so.
What do y'all have to do with the Old Brick House?
What do we do with it?
Is it closed, open?
Uh, yeah, no, it's open, uh, for special request, it's not open year-round, but Bill will occasionally get a request for a wedding or a reception. Uh, they just had a retirement party there, what Bill, last week, uh, so those kind of things. Uh, sometimes people will wanna reserve it just to go out there and take pictures, you know, against the bay, so it's, it's kind of on an as-call basis.
I was just wondering, the, with the maintenance costs, it's just empty most of the time, I mean, not used.
Yeah, it's, we take care of the landscape over there, and if something goes out on it, we repair it. Um, I'm not aware of anything right now that's just broken that needs to be repaired, but it's just one of those things you have to
Well, I just do it.
deal with during the year.
At least, Bill, there's use, the one, the listener, and it's one that we don't use much.
Yes, sir.
So I don't, how many times was it like, actually rented last year?
Bill, how many times was it rented last year?
What? Three times a month? You said you had the business, and what other ones you listed that you control?
Uh, the, our building, the Visitor Center, the Civic Center, which is on Howard Avenue, the Old Brick House and the Lighthouse. Two hundred and eighty application, yeah, I just, I told them, a hundred dollars each, yeah, under the new fee. Now several of them, several of them were licensed under the old fee, but anything going from here forward will be under the new fee. Uh-huh, it was licensed, yeah.
Jerry, Jerry doesn't need the good luck, Frederick needs a good luck.
Uh-huh.
And what's the apply for those things? How, how we get our twelve percent, that's supposed to be the idea of general, I don't...
We're, we're depending on the state, we're depend, we're depending on the state, yes, sir.
The state has to send the money back to the city or to you?
No, to the state, the state, state sends it back to the city, it goes into the general fund. Yep, and, and we've got, uh, we got three of those tax abatement properties that will go back on in twenty twenty, taxes will be due in twenty twenty. Um, yeah, the Half Shell Oyster House, uh, McElroy's and, uh, uh, Biloxi Boardwalk will all go. We've got some projections that were made by... Mm-hmm, uh, well, now, Biloxi Boardwalk got a hundred percent for five years, and, um, McElroy's got, uh, eighty percent for five years, and Half Shell Oyster House, Half Shell Oyster House got a hundred percent for seven years, so. The taxes will be due in twenty twenty, that's our, our projection show.
Biloxi, is that the Bob's?
Uh, Biloxi Boardwalk, no, that's Chris Ferrara. Chris Ferrara.
Yeah, Bob's factory.
That's a good thing.
So what does that got to do with the Biloxi Boardwalk? I know that, I understand, but it's, uh, the deck has to go lot, which is the lot now in, uh, Hob, in the shipyard, we call it, the thing where they haul the boats in, because that's the only one, we don't get anything from Hob, it's just an empty building. So what are you getting back from him? It's a lot considered, which is the lot now, the restaurant. And then you have, when they put the boat on, they put the boats out.
And drive storage.
Okay, so I mean, that's what I'm saying, so how much taxes?
Which one is that? Biloxi Boardwalk is one of the ones that will be due in twenty twenty.
What I'm saying is that...
I've got a, uh, the projected tax abate. Okay, do you wanna look at Biloxi Boardwalk first or the Half Shell?
Yeah.
Okay, let's look at Biloxi Boardwalk first. Their, uh, their abated improvement, the true value, and all this came from the tax assessor's office, was three point two million dollars, three million two hundred sixty-five thousand seven sixty-two. Uh, that was the total improvement. Total impro, okay, the assessed value, the assessed value at, uh, fifteen percent, which is what the formula they gave us, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. Mm-hmm, okay. The to, the tax amount abated was fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And I, I don't have the, the, the projected amount that will go back on there for, as far as taxes goes. That is it, yes, sir, ma'am, it's the boat storage, yes, sir, mm-hmm. They're due in twenty twenty, yes, sir, mm-hmm, okay. Half Shell, um, the previous improvement, the building that was already there was assessed at, uh, sixty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-one. The abated improvement was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, the total improvement, three hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and seventy-five. The assessed value at fifteen percent was forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven, um, and that, that goes back on, that, they'll be due in twenty twenty, the taxes for those. And then, uh, and then McElroy's, McElroy's, the, the building, uh, the, um, previous improvement was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the abated improvement was five hundred and fifty-three thousand five seventy, the total improvement was six hundred and ninety-one five seventy. The assessed value at fifteen percent was eighty-three thousand and thirty-six dollars, and that will, that will go, be due in twenty twenty, so. You want me to resend this to you and David? Okay, no, you and Mike, I'm sorry. Okay, no, you and Mike, I'm sorry.
Speed about 83,000, 45,000, 15,000.
I don't think so, mayor. No, sir, I don't. That's right, yes, sir. Well, some of them are closed down, but I'm sure the abatement is still on the building for, like, the, the Ruview Enterprises, which was the ladies that put together that group for the buildings downtown, where all that was, is on there. No, sir, that's not, there's, uh, Sharkheads, Half Shell, Hilton Garden Inn, uh, Medical Analysis, Hard Rock Casino Hotel, Al Capri, Golden Nugget, uh, Baja Beach, which is now. Uh, all of these that I'm calling off to you were 100% at seven years. Um, Baja Beach, which is now Slap Your Mamas, uh, and then there were four for the Ruview Enterprises. I'm sorry?
Baja was closed down.
Yes, sir, it, it goes with, it, it goes with the property, yes, sir, mm-hmm. Shaggy's, um, the Downtown Biloxi Development Company, 131 Lemieux Street. Oh, that's, uh, no, that's the old, uh, building across the street over there where the Japanese restaurant is. That was Tom Wall, Tom Wall and Buzzy Bolton. Yeah. I'm sorry?
That ought to be up in 2022.
2022. Okay, 2022.
How about the hotel? That was 45,000, Hard Rock.
Hard Rock Hotel? Okay, the, the previous improvement was, uh, 84, 84,200, wait a minute. I'm sorry, uh, 80, 84,000. No, that's gotta be million. 84, 281, 310. Okay, the abated improvement. The, the abated improvement on that was 23,033,381 for a total improvement of 107,314,691. At 15%, uh, essentially 3.4 million. And that comes off, uh, that, the taxes will be due on that in 2023. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Okay.
What is the breakdown on Golden Nugget?
Golden Nugget?
Been there two or three years, I guess, so. We got about two or four years left.
Here we go. Okay. They showed, uh, they showed previous, previous improvements. Uh, one for 44 million, one for almost 7 million, one for almost 29 million. The abated improvement was, uh, 31 million, a little over 31 million. And the assessed value at 15% was 4.6. Yeah, 4.6 million. That one comes off in 2023. Well, taxes will be due in 2023. And then you've still got.
And the fire trucks coming, there they are, and the fire trucks coming.
Yeah, you've also got the Hookup Restaurant, the Boat Storage down there, Sal and Mookie's, McElroy's I talked about, Crest Live, which, uh, if something hap- when something happens with that, The Reef, The White House Hotel, Margaritaville, um, The Watermark. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll send it to you. The Watermark, uh, Big Play Entertainment and, uh, the Hilton Garden Inn and Suites.
Would you say about the Hookup? That's Galast now.
The Hookup, the, the restaurant, the, uh, the restaurant and the Boat Storage both received tax abatements.
I'm just saying those are coming up now. Do, didn't you say 2020? They, they've been there for seven years.
The, okay, the restaurant, the restaurant will, uh, have taxes due until 2021. But the, uh, the Boat Storage, 2020.
How much is the restaurant? Are they supposed to spend a year on the house?
Restaurant, there was no previous improvement, so it's, uh, the abated improvement was 481,000. Uh, assessed value, 72, 203. Uh, and that one comes off in, uh, our taxes will be due in 2021. Yes, sir, mm-hmm. Yes, the, the chart that we did shows when it will end, which some of those will end in 18 and 19. And it shows the, the year that they pay taxes. So I'll send this to you. Yes, sir, mm-hmm.
Jerry, do you have any vacancies? Right now you don't, do you, in your office?
No, sir. Uh, we have, we have exactly the number of people it takes to run our department, the Visitor Center, the Civic Center. It, I mean, it's, it's exactly what it has to be.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
Do y'all want me to just schedule it immediately following the 1:30?
Yes. Got a motion to recess by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lawrence, all favors unanimous vote.